Welcome to the August AMSA Board Meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the AMSA website. Or, Mike, maybe you want to talk for that exactly where it's being livestreamed so that I don't get it wrong?
Here, correct, on the AMSA Facebook page. It is streaming as a post. If you can't find our Facebook page, you can search for it, or you can click the link at the bottom of our homepage on the website.
Thank you, Mike, for the explanation. So, the first step of the board meeting is for us to announce all the board members in attendance, and Sarah, if you would do that, please?
All right, Don Capello, Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, Zachary Oldesby, Raul Porres, Liz Saul, Maura Webster.
And Kristen Carney. She just showed up.
Yep, she just arrived.
Just in time. Welcome, everybody. Next up, I need a timekeeper to keep us in line here. Looking for volunteers?
I would love to give somebody else that opportunity.
Zach, would you be up for keeping us on time? I heard a yes there, so Zach is our timekeeper. On the initial agenda, we had an executive session posted, but we will not be using the executive session tonight. So, no executive session. So, at this point, we have recorded our attendance and guests, and we're ready for public comment. Liz, has anyone reached out to you for public comment?
No, as of two minutes ago, I had no request for public comment unless there is anyone on the line that would like to make a public comment.
Last call for public comment. All right, we are done with public comment. So, next up is the vote section. We have two votes for tonight's meeting. First is to approve the meeting minutes for the July 29th meeting.
I would make a motion to approve those if no one has any questions.
I'll second that.
Who's second? Don, okay. All right, recording. Who's here? Okay. Don Capello.
Yes.
Kristen Carney.
Yes.
Liz Saul.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Zachary Oldesby.
Yes.
Motion.
Motion passes unanimously. At this point, I'd like to pass the baton either to Sheila or Sarah to talk about the minor revisions to policy that were done and approved in governance. Who would like to explain? Give us an overview of that?
So, Sarah, would you mind if I pass it to you since you dealt with Desi on that?
Not at all. Not at all.
Thank you.
Linda Edwards was working with Brenton Stewart, who is the liaison for this, for the amendment process, which takes an amendment process to make any changes to an enrollment policy. So, there are only a few changes. Basically, there were updates suggested by, pretty much suggested by, the Charter School Office. So, it's been provisionally approved and approved through, or recommended through, Governance Committee. And I can just very quickly give you the brief summary on this. The application process, which usually starts in October, and then the lottery is the first Friday in January. It's been changed to November for it to open. And due to the net cap spending, the information that comes from DEES, it was suggested that we make it later. So, it'll be the first Friday in February. The next one is Brenton Stewart added language regarding homeless eligibility similar to what we did for the handbook. And then, instead of requesting two documents for proof of residency in the application process, we're changing it to three to be similar to what other schools in our area, Marlboro is one of them, and they asked for three documents. And then, there was some clarification and proof of residency that just needed to be a little more explicit, and that is in two places, and that is all. That was what was done. So, all they're doing now, it's been provisionally approved, it needs to go through the board. I have it all ready. I will be sending in the amendment request with the checklist and all the proper documentation, which will go out tomorrow morning.
Excellent. Any questions for Sarah? Hearing no questions, I'll take a motion to approve the revisions to the registration procedure.
I'll move that.
Zach and...
I'll second.
Second from Liz. Sarah, please call the roll.
Great.
And Samini has joined the meeting, by the way.
Oh, great.
And so has Ben, I don't know if you saw me.
Okay, let me do that, then. So, Mo and Samini, okay. So, we are here, okay. Ben Hamel.
Yes.
Don Capello.
Yes.
Kristen Carney.
Yes.
Liz Saul.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Samini.
Yes.
Zachary Oldesby.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. This is the end of our vote section. Next up, we have a special announcement for making our steps for the buying, purchasing, the building and campus improvement financing. And I'd like to pass the baton to Leanna McLaren to give us an overview of the decisions and results from the Finance Committee.
Okay. So, the Finance Committee met on August 2nd to discuss locking in the interest rate for our building financing. On that day, the base interest rate was 2.63%. Our consultant, Bob Baldwin, presented a spreadsheet that showed the interest rate steadily declining since May 17th from a rate of two, a base rate of 2.88% down to 2.63%. And when the Finance Committee got together in hopes of getting the best possible rate, the Finance Committee decided to watch the interest rate for the next several days and lock it in when it was either, when it either reached below 2.5% or above 2.7%. On August 9th, the interest rate was locked in at 2.71%, the base rate. Currently, our interest rate is locked in at either a 10, I'm sorry, a 15 or a 20-year period, and we can make that decision later closer to the closing, as far as that's concerned. So, with all of the other, so that's the base rate that was locked in, and then there's a few other fees involved with getting the final interest rate on the mortgage. So, we have the bank spread or the bank's profit percentage at 1.45, and then you deduct a factor of 0.79% because we're tax exempt. We're going to get tax-exempt financing. And then, we're going to pay two basis points to lock it in for a net locked-in interest rate of 3.31%.
All right. Questions for Leanna?
Leanna, this is Liz. That sounds like a great rate. I'm assuming that that is correct, and that's the Finance Committee's assessment of that. I think that, you know, previously, we'd been much higher, and that's kind of where we sort of fell apart in our, you know, in our plans to purchase.
Yes, the Finance Committee voted on that plan unanimously. And just to give you some insight, my previous financial models were based on 3.41%, so it's even lower than what we were projecting at.
Okay, thank you.
And just Leanna, so I was going to say, we paid two basis points to get that, right, to lock in?
Yep, and that equals to 0.02%. It's very small.
Right, of the overall loan, but I mean, do we just have to pay that upfront at closing cost, right?
We can either pay it upfront, or we can pay it over the term of the loan.
Oh, they let us finance the basis points for locking in the rate? Okay, thanks.
No, it's, we still have this option. So, we have a choice to make, either to add two basis points to the cost of our loan, or to pay upfront a fixed amount of money.
Right, it's just, it's a lot of money to pay upfront. That's why I was just curious if we, you know, when we do that, that's a check we'd have to write at closing, right?
Right, if we chose the upfront cost, we would have to pay that money at closing.
Cash is king, right?
All right. Other questions for Leanna? Thank you very, Leanna, thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure.
And for locking our interest rate in.
My pleasure.
Next up, Ellen, Executive Director Report.
Okay, here we go. All right, well, it's great to be here with all of you this evening. So, I welcome you out in this, in our virtual meeting, and those of you who are at home on Facebook Live. I hope you're all well and getting ready to come back to school. So, this is my overview of my report. You know, just a quick welcome back to everyone and to all of you. Hopefully, you've all had a wonderful summer as well. I'm going to talk a little bit about the August professional development, the plans there, and then some basic back-to-school topics. We're going to talk a little bit about AMSA 2025, which is a teaching and learning initiative that we will be participating in this year, led by Dr. Lewis. We have some updated information on our community of inclusion and belonging and some plans we have for that for the year. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about the masking and safety protocols. The masking and safety protocols were sent out to teachers yesterday, and parents received their first initial email about 4:30 this afternoon. I also have a building update for you, a capital campaign update, and then going to just review a little bit. In the June board meeting, I talked extensively about our focus for the 2122 school year, and so just a quick review of that. And then, looking quickly at upcoming events, because we are about to start the fall school year, which is very exciting. We have a lot of things that are going to be happening. So, just our first, once again, just a welcome back. We are really excited to see our teachers coming back this week and the staff. Our deans came back this week, and it's fun to see them again. And we are ready to go. More and more teachers are showing up, and we're excited to kick off our professional development next week, which is the next item that we'll be talking about. So, new teacher orientation. We added a couple members to staff, you may remember. We had some changes in the Science Department because Dr. Jurey retired, so there was some additions there as well. We have a new school counselor that we hired using some of the ESRS 3 grant money. So, those new folks will be joining us on August 23rd and 24th for our orientation. They'll get an opportunity to meet the department chairs with a little bit of extra time there, and the mentoring program as well later on in the week. And then, on Wednesday, August 25th, our teachers and the counselors and the rest of the staff return, and we will have our professional development over three days, August 25th to the 27th. And so, some highlights of our professional development, first of all, as everyone loves, the PTO-sponsored lunch, which is going to be on Thursday, so we're excited about that. We always have a wide range of all types of different ethnic foods, and our parents take such good care of us. So, we want to thank all of them who are thinking about what they may cook up for us next week, and we're looking forward to that time together. We also, you may remember, we've changed our time-off management system. It's also part of the new substitute system that we have. It's called frontline training. So, I'm sorry, frontline is the name of the product, and we'll be having our training this week as well. You may remember from last summer that we had a DEI, so Diversity Equity Inclusion book list that, documentary list that we sent out to the staff. I think all of you received that last year as well. And we had discussion groups. Well, we did the same thing this year, and in June, we sent those out, that list out. We added a couple topics, and we will be having our discussion groups with everyone on Thursday morning. So, excited about that. That went over very, very well last year. We're looking forward to those discussions as well. Then, we have some time with Attorney Michael Joyce. He's our school attorney in our AMSA IT department, and we're going to be looking at IT security and also student data protection. Both, you know, in the age that we're in with technology, it's just vitally important that we're always on top of that, making sure that our student records and everything is well-maintained and protected. And then, our teachers are going to spend quite a bit of time in department chair meetings with their departments and prepping for the school year, as well as time in their classrooms, putting those together. We will be having our first roundtable on the teaching and learning, which is the AMSA protocols, which is the AMSA 2025, and we're going to talk about that in a coming slide. So, on our back-to-school topics, there's basically three that I'll be talking with you about tonight. The first is to introduce you to the AMSA 2025 Teaching and Learning Initiative, as I mentioned earlier, led by, initially by Dr. Lewis, but we will be creating a committee of volunteers to work on that. We're very excited about that. And then, I will be talking a little bit about our inclusion and belonging work in 2021, 22, which is going to be expanded as well, because we have a topic, we have a community that's filled with all different types of people, all different backgrounds, genders, and races. And so, we want to include everyone and make sure everyone feels safe and that they belong in our community. So, talk a little bit more about that and about the masking and safety protocols that we'll be looking at, at least initially in the fall. So, the first is the AMSA 2025. I know I've talked to some of you about this quite a bit, our new teaching and learning initiative. And so, what this is going to be is going to be a series of stakeholder forums and surveys. We've talked about the Education Committee helping us out with this. We will be putting together a committee of all different adults from AMSA, the teachers, counselors, staff members, administrators. And we will be having conversations around our final goal, which is really to have us all come together again. It's been a really long time, and to talk about what is fundamental to everything that we do, right? How do we teach? And how do our students learn best? Right now, we have a lot of different policies that Anders and I have worked with the community over, gee, the last four years or so. We've created a homework policy. We've created a professionalism document, communication protocol for families and for teachers, and also our mentoring program. And so, there's a lot of different policies and practices and things that we have, and we want to just bring all of those together and really come up with what is our cohesive philosophy? What best practices do we have for our teaching practices and the way that our students learn? And so, we, our goal is then to create a unique AMSA vision for teaching and learning that addresses the following question. So, how do we best help our students academically, socially, and emotionally? Big overarching question. And then, what have we learned about teaching and learning over the years? This, we're heading into our, geez, our 17th year. So, what have we learned over all of those years? And what have we learned, especially over this last year and a half during the pandemic? And take all of those ideas coming from all different departments and subject areas and grade levels, parents, students, the board, and pull all of that together until we have one cohesive protocol that we can always turn to when we hire new employees, when we need to be refocused on our vision and where we're heading for the future, and what we all believe is best for our students. So, just to talk a little bit more about this, because we want to be clear that our staff, they're very passionate educators, and we do really support them being independent in their classroom, working with their department chairs. This is, the goal of this is never and will never be to impose a top-down approach. This is going to be a collaborative effort for anyone who would like to be involved on the committee, so volunteer opportunity. And typically, we do these types of things before. It's how we came up with all the protocols that I mentioned in the earlier slide, and they've been very successful. We often have, you know, 20, 25 folks that will volunteer their time to help us put these thoughts together. The first time that we're going to have one of these roundtables will be during the professional development next week, and it will be the first opportunity for teachers to really look and say, what do we do well? What went really well this past year and a half? What have we learned? And how do we know we're going to be successful in this next year ahead, as we all get our feet back on the ground in the school building? So, this is, this is going to be a year-long initiative. We're going to look at this from a lot of different sides, and that by the end of the year, we will have a document that's going to give you, that you'll be able to read, that each of us will be able to hold into our hands. That will be our teaching and learning practices, best practices for AMSA that's going to guide us into AMSA 2025. So, you know, we remember way back in the beginning when Anders and I first started leading the school, and I think it was Pauline and Ryan that used to talk about, you know, the ship and riding the ship, and that, you know, boats are all going in different directions. But our goal really is to have us all paddling down the same river in the same direction, but each of us really in our own unique boats. Now, some of us are in kayaks, and some of us are in canoes, and some of us are in rafts, and that we get to kind of pick those rafts, but that we're all heading down together, and we all have unique paddles that we're using, all unique maybe types of boats where we, you know, shine, and we have different unique strokes. And the important part of that uniqueness is that different teachers, they're able to reach different students in different ways. And so, we do really believe that that is part of our secret sauce. And, and so, this won't be a top-down approach, but it will be a collaborative effort to pull all of this information into one place. So, the goal is to hear every voice, bring us all together. We often talk about cleavages. We're hoping that this is something that's going to address that cleavage around teaching and learning, and that we'll be able to come together and create a set of practices that's going to help our students to be able to live our core values of integrity, excellence, and community, always keeping our mission front and center, and remembering that all students from all backgrounds and all abilities will excel in all subjects, and that's what we're committed to. And we believe it's time to take everything that we've learned over the last 16 years, especially during this pandemic time, and get us all on the same page. So, that's going to be a big initiative going ahead. Now, I want to talk a little bit about our community of belonging. We've done some diversity, equity, inclusion work in the last couple of years. I think we've made a lot of progress. I think in this past year, especially doing it, working, doing the work remotely, I think that some things started to solidify for me, and I feel like we need to, there's a couple steps I think we've missed and that we want to go back and take a look at. The first is that we're going to add a stipend in position, which will be posted next week when Virginia comes back from vacation, to have someone within the school who's going to work with Anders as an inclusion coordinator. Somebody who's going to help lead up this DEI self-assessment. We've never done a self-assessment. There was a tool that Donisa mentioned last year. There's also additional wonderful tools that are put out by the Department of Education, and so that we can look at all different parts of the school, everything from our handbook policies straight through to the classrooms, and make sure that the practices that we have, that they are inclusive of everyone in our community. And so, this inclusion coordinator will put together, once again, a multi-stakeholder team of families, students, and other AMSA adults, and work our, work through this year on this self-assessment. And then, we will take what the results are from that self-assessment, and then, from there, we will create a multi-year plan. Look, let's look to see where the gaps are, and then decide how we're going to prioritize those gaps, and then how we're going to actually address them. One other area, when we talk about inclusion, that we don't often hit on is our LGBTQIA students. And I think that that's a piece, I remember a conversation I had a couple of years ago with one of our students who has since graduated, but this person said to me, you know, Ms. Lindsay, we have a lot of different students and backgrounds and things at the school, but coming out as gay in our school would probably be one of the scariest things that this person could imagine. And that nearly broke my heart, because I really believe that each and every one of us should be able to be true to ourselves and who we really are. And so, I think that we need to look at that too, and how those folks are welcomed and included and loved and supported within our community. A couple of years ago, Anders and Brianna Murphy attended a two-day history professional development in Boston through an organization called History on a Race. And we are going to be working with them and talk about bias across race and across LGBTQIA topics as well, and we'll be working with History on that organization also this fall. And so, I'm personally very excited about this work as a mother of two queer children. So, and a growing number of LGBTQIA students in our school who need to feel that they have all of our support every single day, and the support of their friends and classmates in our school. And so, from this work and prioritizing where the DEI assessment leads us, from there then, we will create the AMSA Equity Vision Statement. And we're also going to put together a website page on the AMSA website that will be dedicated to our inclusion work as well. And then, I plan to communicate the progress of this work to the board quarterly. When you all see my annual goals coming up for the year, this you will see will be part of my annual goals and work that I will be doing with Anders and the rest of the community. Now, quickly, we're going to talk about the masking and safety protocols. As I mentioned earlier, the parents received an email today, and the staff received an email yesterday. And, oopsie, excuse me. Rushed ahead there. So, we will be using, at least initially, we're going to be looking at data from across the state and from within our community and our school community as well. And we'll look at this and change this policy as needed. But initially, at least, we are definitely going to have an indoor masking policy for all students, no matter the vaccination status. And of course, that's connected to breakthrough cases. We want to make sure that everyone, even our vaccinated folks, don't end up having the variant come into the school and having breakthrough vaccination cases, or having any other kind of spread to our unvaccinated or our younger students, sixth graders, who we've realized only two of them are 12 and eligible for the vaccine. The rest of them are all 10 and 11 years old. So, this is going to help take care of them as well. And because at the moment, we're only aware of 152 of our students who are fully vaccinated, and about 64% of our staff has reported being vaccinated, although we know that there's more in both of those, we don't have any exact number. And we've, you know, encouraged and asked folks to please give us that information. We cannot require it. So, we are hopeful that folks are going to be forthcoming with letting us know, because it's going to help us with the contact tracing, which we still have to do. So, there's a federal regulation out that states that mask mandates are on buses, all buses, all time. So, it'll be buses for sports, it is buses used for clubs, and obviously, to and from school. I will be attending, on the subject of buses, I'll be attending a meeting tomorrow with the bus company. I'll be attending a meeting tomorrow with the bus company and with Marlboro Public Schools to finalize the busing and how many buses we're going to have for the year. So there'll be more information coming home to parents after my meeting with with Marlboro Public School and the bus company tomorrow at twelve thirty. Our vaccinated adults must wear a mask when working with students indoors, in the classrooms, in the hallways, in the lunchrooms. All adults need to be vaccinated. And unvaccinated adults must wear masks indoors at all times. We also feel this this policy, you know, there can be stigma around whether you're wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, and people are wondering why you're wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. This just is a blank blanket policy for everyone. It I believe it's going to keep us healthy. Our goal is to keep all the kids in school, all our teachers in school, teaching, learning. And I believe this is the best way, we believe this is the best way to to give us the best chance. The longer we're in school, the longer our and the more our kids are getting educated, which is our whole purpose. All right, so mask breaks. You know, we're going to encourage the the teachers if they have time in in a day before, you know, end of class, beginning of class, to take their kids out, to, you know, to supervise them, take them outside, give them a mask break for the lower school kids. And that's sixth and seventh grade because our eighth to twelfth graders, they pass between buildings all the time in in when they're going from class to class, at least a couple of times a day. And just encourage them to take their masks off when that when that happens. And I think that that's going to work out fine. And because we're still going to have our eight period rotating schedule, going back to our schedule pre pandemic. And so we don't have time to fit in traditional mask breaks. As far as the lunches are concerned, you know, our hope and and assumption is that is that everyone ages twelve and up are going to be vaccinated. That's certainly what we would encourage folks to do to keep our community safe. We know our sixth graders, I mentioned, they're not old enough yet, most of them. And so we will distance them, we're going to split them between two spaces. And they will, we'll be able to separate them. They'll be socially socially distanced during lunch, so they'll be able to take their masks off and feel safe and their families will feel safe having them come come home. The other grades, though, the the twelfth graders can eat outside. That's a senior privilege that they've had for as many years as I've been around. And they will continue to do that, which will reduce the numbers of kids who are in the upper school cafeteria. And but the rest of the students, they will be in the cafeteria as as they would have been pre pandemic, which is in line with the Department of Education regulations, most of which were on the conservative side of, but but for the lunches, we're we're hoping that folks that that they'll eat and keep those masks on if they're not actually eating. And so since a close contact is considered being in a with a without a mask for fifteen minutes or more, if they come in, grab their lunch, sit down, they've still got a mask on, they eat their sandwich, they put their mask back on, it should put them maskless under fifteen minutes. And our, we will have monitors in there making sure and reminding students that as soon as they're they're done eating, that they need to put that those masks right back on. We will be doing testing. We did the the By Next Now testing last spring when we went back to school. We will be continuing to do that too. And the state has a new program that I I just went to some training on this week called Test and Stay. And this this program is, if you are someone who has very mild symptoms or you don't have symptoms, but you were a close contact, we can test you at the school and that you would stay. You wouldn't be sent home right away unless you had other COVID symptoms. If you did, then you would be sent home. But this is for somebody who doesn't have symptoms but needs a test that they can stay until the the test results come back. But the nurse's office is very busy putting all this together, but but families will be getting more information on testing and COVID. The email I sent home today had a link in it. And that link that they need to go in there and put their student's name in there, their grade, and then upload a copy, a photo of of their, the COVID card that they that they got when they had their their vaccination. And we're going to be able to track close contacts by that. There there's a whole protocol, it's about eight pages long that we got from the Department of Education and with different scenarios on it. Anyone who would like to see it, I do have the link down here at the bottom of my club, bottom of my slides. As far as sports and clubs are concerned, it's going to be the same for them. If they're indoor, they must mask. So volleyball will mask, clubs that are, sports that are outside will not need to mask. And it will be the same thing with clubs. Indoor, we're masking. If you can take your meeting outside, then you don't have to mask. All right, quick building update, not a a ton to update you on there, but a quick thoughts there and then just just to update you where we are in our capital campaign. Building update, as I mentioned last month, we did sign the purchase and sales agreement. We expect to pass papers early fall. We have a target date that we're looking at. We have our fingers crossed. As Leanna mentioned, we have locked in the interest rate for three point three one with Boston Private. Very excited about that. Every one of these little pieces that comes together is very, very exciting for us. On August twelfth, actually, I think that might have been August fourteenth. And I think I, let's pretend that says August fourteenth. Mass Development's Board of Directors approved AMSA's tax exempt financing application. That was another big piece to to get through, and we got through that. We have, as you remember, we've also gotten through the our owner's project manager stage. We've been working with Answer Consulting. They've been fantastic. I met with them today as well. And then on September first, I will be presenting to the Designer Selection Board. This is a state level board. And what they do is, so we've gone through the process so far where we we've put out an an application, it's like a posting to have the designer, this is the architect, right? To so we've we've posted it. Eric hosted a tour of the campus for any architects that wanted to take a look at the building to see what the project was. We had several of those actually felt the application. Those applications we have, we have reviewed. As I said, I I met with a couple of folks today that that are kind of coaching me through this process and helping me to get to be to be prepared to actually present at the Designer Selection Board on September first. And I think we have some good applicants. We're feeling pretty good about it. And we should know by the end of that meeting, the board actually selects the architect for us. So different from the OPM, the OPM, we might be go through a state approved process. But the the this, the group of us that were interviewing the the Facilities Task Force Group, we actually decide who we want to work with. With the Designer Selection, the state actually tells us, they rank them, who they think is most appropriate to work with us. And those are the folks that we will that we will work with. If if the decision isn't finally made on September first because we feel we don't have complete information, we want to do interviews or something like that, then it will get extended to nine fifteen. But by nine fifteen, we have to have that architect in place. The next step after the architect, once we have that in place, talking to Answer today, is we then start looking for the construction management. They've talked about the different ways to to go through the procurement laws because there's two different laws, whole different thing. But we will then be looking for the construction manager. That will be the next step. As far as the capital campaign is concerned, running these things all all at the same time, I mentioned, I believe, last month that we're working with Betsy Grenier from Hana Street Consulting, so a photo of Betsy. She's been super. She put together feasibility study for us. That feasibility study was presented to the Development Committee. My guess is Ben will have more to say about that in the Development Committee report that he is going to do. And and, you know, the feasibility, I I we we believe that we have a capital campaign amount and and timeline that we feel is feasible. I I believe we will be successful, and it's going to be a lot of work for for all of us, really. It's a commitment for everyone on the board and hopefully for everyone in our community to come together, to raise money, to give our students exactly what they need to continue to be to be successful, right? Just successful at school, we'll be able to offer them more in in their education. And so the community really needs to come together and come behind this project. And I invite each and every one of you to participate in that. And then we're we're looking at phase two now. We're we're setting up our internal infrastructure, the board infrastructure. Where's this these committees going to live? You know, how is this going to be organized? And then we will be looking for, I will be looking for the the department, the Development Community would be looking for wonderful, dedicated volunteers from our community who are going to be part of our capital campaign team. And these volunteers are going to be really running this and helping us to to open doors into corporations, foundations and other private citizens who might be willing to to get involved and to invest in our learning community. And just lastly, talking about just a review as we head into the new year, six areas of focus for our school. Once again, it will always be at the very top of our list to be faithful to our mission, to our charter and to the core values. We we will, we will always, they will be the, you know, we talk about the the lighthouse, the 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 light that that guides us. And our mission and core values will always be that for our team, for our teachers, and hopefully our families as well. And once again, we are committed and continue to be committed and will always be committed to a culture of trust and respect. That is exactly what has brought our school to where it is today, is our dedication to to really let the folks know in our community that we care about them. We care about them as individuals. We understand that that we're all just people that are working together. And so we we've really worked hard to develop a culture of trust and respect. I think that that the evidence of that has been shown in the survey that we that we conducted in the spring. Because we know that without trust between all members of our community and without mutual respect, you have no community. And also really going to be spending a lot of time in Dr. Lewis and in his team looking at the the AMSA twenty twelve, twenty twenty five initiative that I mentioned earlier, also the Inclusion and Belonging Initiative, at the construct, the purchase and the construction project, which is is going to be, I think, my my whole life for the next couple of years. I'm very excited about it. And also our development and fundraising plan as well over the next couple of years. Quickly, just upcoming events, because Raul likes these and I like to remember what he likes. August thirtieth, and he's a new parent. I thought about that too as well. So here you go. So August thirtieth, we have our new student orientation. This is for sixth, ninth, and any new students in seventh and eighth. Our first day of school is August thirty first. September twenty first is our parent night for grades six and nine. And we do that on purpose. We split the buildings and helps with the parking and helps with just congestion. Everyone will be in masks this these nights, so come prepared for that. We'll get more information as we get closer to these events. September twenty eighth will be Parents' Night for grades seven and eight. And September thirtieth will be Parent Night for grades ten, eleven, and twelve. And here we are, the start of the school year. We really hope that our AMSA eagle wouldn't have a mask on this fall. But our eagle is very strong and very wise, we're hoping. And our eagle's going to keep his mask on because he thinks that's the best thing for our community. So thank you all for listening. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ellen. A great presentation, covered many, many areas. Are there questions from the board for Ellen?
And Dr. Lewis is here as well, if if you have any questions, especially around AMSA twenty twenty five or the diversity work. He's happy to answer questions there as well.
I'm just going to make a quick comment, Rod. I don't know if it's better for me to make it now or lag it for later, but it's a quick one. When you, if you remember from last month when we reviewed the the survey comments and and the areas of concern, more than one was tied to the could be addressed or we thinking or hoping that it will be addressed by this AMSA twenty twenty five effort. So I am looking forward to that and the result of that. I I like your analogy that everybody can have their own boat and their own paddles as long as we're in the same river, having the same direction. So hopefully, out of that comes actionable things and, you know, specific clarification to address the cleavages. I don't, I don't think the goal is to get rid of the cleavages. You know, we can have our differences and we can, like you said, as long as we're all in the same river. So that I'm encouraged by that, so I I think it's a good idea.
Thank you to Dr. Lewis for the the river and the, I I just happen to be a canoeer and kayaker, so I I added those two pieces.
Yeah, if if I could just add a few things to, Ellen did a terrific job explaining it. I I thought before the board meeting, I thought of a couple of words that can, you know, just kind of neatly summarize what the goals are here. Unity, coherence, and excellence. Unity in the sense that this is an opportunity to do something that, to come together and to do something that we haven't done in a long time, which is to sit down together face to face, close, as close as we can, and to break bread and to talk about what's really so fundamental to everything that we do in school and that is teaching and learning. How do we do it? How do we best do it? How do we best help our students? And to come together over that and to help us, help lower school teachers get closer to upper school teachers, upper school teachers lower to lower school teachers, to help people who, you know, think more about the whole child, people who think more about academics, see the common ground that I think all of us really have, to help CP teachers, honors teachers, AP teachers, see the see the common ground that we have. So I think unity is something that's very important, something that I think we can get out of this. Coherence too, Ellen mentioned coherence. So this coming week on Monday, we're going to be meeting a lot of our fantastic new teachers. We're very excited to do that for sure. And we're going to be talking about a lot of the different policies that we have have in place and the great work that we've done up to this point. We have a homework policy, we have a communications policy, we have a professionalism policy. We have, Mr. Prue has done a great job putting together a mentoring program. We've got all these policies discreet in different places. So this in many ways will offer us a chance to bring some coherence to those policies and to that set of ideas. So unity, coherence, and then the last word that I think helps explain the goals, excellence, which is one of our core values. You know, we're we're, Ellen mentioned that we're starting our seventeenth year. We're getting close to our twentieth year, AMSA twenty twenty five. And I have no doubt that we have the ability between all of our staff, between our fantastic counselors, between our terrific teachers, our wonderful administrators, we have the ability to define what excellence is in teaching and learning. We have the ability to figure out a roadmap to help us achieve our mission, right? Our mission as defined by our charter is that all students of all backgrounds and abilities will excel in all subjects. Let's figure out how we do that. Let's figure out how we achieve our core values of excellence, integrity, and community. I have no doubt that we can do that. Now, it certainly won't be easy. It it will be difficult. And as Ellen said, we will be very interested and very concerned about respecting difference. Difference is very important, right? Teachers have different styles. Students benefit from those teaching styles. So that's very important to make sure that that we do respect that. At the same time, we do want to find and and define what are the best teaching and learning practices that help our students. So it won't be easy, but I have no doubt that we can do it. I'm looking forward to do it. I'm looking forward to listening and working with everybody and working with the committee and and working with our fantastic teachers and administrators. And I have no doubt at the end of the year, we're going to produce something really magnificent. And not only will we produce something really magnificent, but we'll come together in the process. And after this past year of a pandemic, when we were all apart, to be able to come together and to do something like this is something I'm really looking forward to. So thank you. That was a little bit long winded.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Great, great thoughts, great, great leadership for us.
Great, great thoughts, great leadership for us. Questions for, for Ellen or Anders? Oh, did you want to say a little more about contact tracing? About what happens if someone gets sick?
No, not really, Roger, because honestly, it's, it's so complicated that you really have to go down a flow chart. It, it all depends upon who's vaccinated, who's not. Is it a breakthrough? Is it not a breakthrough? And as I mentioned, if, if folks want to take a look at it, just click on that link when Sarah posts my, my slides and you'll be able to see it. I did send it out to the staff and it wasn't because I wanted them to, to think that they have to enforce it. It will be coming through the nurse's office. They will monitor all that. But it was just so that they could see how, how complicated it was. It was like protocol B1, B2, B3, C1, C2, C3. And, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare to try to interpret it.
Yeah, very good.
It's complicated.
Yeah, it is extremely complicated. And if parents have questions, they should reach out to you or the school nurse. Is that?
Yeah, I would say, I would say first take a look at the, at the document. It's right on the Department of Education website on their COVID site. And, or to Maureen. Because I really, I think it's going to be a situation where, where we have a case, we have a, something that's happening and we're going to have to kind of like run, run down the, the list of things to see where it fits and which protocol it fits under and then follow, follow that. The, the, one of the reasons why knowing if a student or a faculty and, and staff are vaccinated is because you don't need to do that kind of contact tracing for, for people who are vaccinated, right? So it would really be helpful if we know. If we don't know if somebody is vaccinated, we have to assume that they're not. And it gets much more complicated when we're working with people who are not vaccinated. And we know we have folks that are not. So we, it would be really, really helpful for us to have real concrete information.
Ellen, just one question on the masking. Do you foresee that that's something that, you know, is going to be reviewed monthly and maybe changing? Or what's, just what's your, your gut on that?
Yes, we're definitely going to be reviewing it monthly. You know, we follow these things. We're on, you know, news alerts all the time. And so we're, we're really following this closely. I do know that Marlboro sent out a letter to their families yesterday at 4:30 saying that they are also masking. Asabed's masking. And most, all the charter slogans except one that I know of are, are doing, you know, full, full masking as well. So I think that, I think folks are waiting to find out what happens when we all get back and what does the variant do? One of my big concerns Liz really is, is substitute teachers. Because even if folks are, aren't tremendously sick, but they test positive for COVID.
They're out.
And quarantined for 10 days, right? And so how many teachers can you have out quarantining for 10 days or half a class? And then it's difficult to, to make forward motion on, on, on content. So we're trying to keep everyone in class as much as we most possibly, possibly can.
Great, thanks.
Other questions? Okay. Thanks, thank you, Ellen. Great, great, looking forward to the start of the school year. I'm very excited for this. Sorry, lost my place here. Parent report. Maura subbing for Bella.
Thanks, Roger. So as usually happens, a lot of the parent questions that came in via email, at least that I received, were answered by Ellen tonight so far. We did get three emails from different parents with concerns about masking and really hoping that everybody would be required to wear a mask and that it wouldn't be, you know, vaccinated, unvaccinated, et cetera. So I would recommend to all parents, if they haven't taken a look at that email at the welcome letter, to go ahead and do that and then reach out if they have any additional questions. The only other question that came in that I saw was a question about dates for upcoming community forums this year. If, Ellen, you guys have thought about that yet, if there are any, and if it will be virtual or not?
We definitely will have family forums this year. Mike can probably jump in here. I don't believe that we have a schedule for them yet. There is one new, Mike, you want to jump in?
We don't have any of the family forums scheduled yet. We're definitely planning on having them, like you said, Ellen. We have a new parent, uh, family forum coming up on August. I believe it's August 25th next, I believe it's next Wednesday night at 6:00 PM for new families. But for the, our traditional family forums, we do plan on that. I'm assuming the first one will be mid-September.
Yeah, and, and you know, we had huge numbers, huge numbers for us. Because usually at a, at an in-person family forum, Liz was one of our, our studies that would come. You know, we, we would, at the very beginning, we would sometimes get 30 or 35 and then it would whittle down to about 15. But we were up sometimes 100, 140 on the virtual ones. So, you know, I would say this, especially initially with, with where we are with COVID, we will have, the first couple at least will be, will be virtual. And if there's folks who want to come out in the morning, I don't, I don't know. We'll, we'll see. We can, we can mix it up.
Awesome. All right, great. Thank you, guys. That's the parent perspective.
Great, I think we'll start online now, Maura.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Maura. Next up is Zach with the teacher representative report.
Okay, so likewise, most of the comments I have have also been about masking. And if I had to sum up what it's coming through is grudging acceptance of we didn't want to have to be doing this, but since we're in this situation, it's probably for the best that we're doing this. To just take quick excerpts of two comments I've got here that I think sum up the overwhelm. My current preference is for masks to be mandatory. I can't stand wearing a mask, but it seems the best choice at the moment to protect each other, kids especially. I also feel it would be difficult in the classroom to please who is okay to opt out and could be divisive. My opinion is it's best to have a simple policy across the board until the situation becomes safer. And then another person, I favor a mask mandate given these reasons. The concerns of the immunocompromised, the non-vaccination of grade six, the staff with kids at home, the prevention of quarantining, and the keeping standardization of a norm. Thank you very much. So that really kind of sums up a lot of people. It's, it's not what we had hoped for, but it's what we've got. Now, there are people that disagree. Some people are concerned that maybe masks haven't been proven well enough. The vaccination status might not have as much of an impact as people are thinking. But the overwhelming amount that I've gotten is, as I've said it. Two other things that I've got, more support for the music program and the visual performing arts. Hope that we can find a way to survey and get quantifiable and measurable data of interest. And then a short request that is, just very simply, if we can find someone more comfortable to do PD and staff meetings as people find the cafeteria uncomfortable. The chair specifically being uncomfortable. That's the, that is the update I've got.
Any questions for Zach? Thank you. So at this point, is there any items that we wish to discuss further? So we're at the point in the agenda where we're flagging board discussion items from the ED parent or faculty report section. Hearing nothing to flag, we will move on. Chair business. I have very little chair business. I'd like to have Liz do a brief update on where we are on the ED evaluation, year-end evaluation and report.
Yep, so we have the evaluation survey report generated and I did send it to everyone. So you should have all received it this week. If you did not, just let me know. We'll be using that to draft the memo. Unfortunately, because the, it was, the report just came through on Monday, there just wasn't enough time to get the memo drafted and meet with Ellen before the meeting. So we'll plan in September to have the, the memo completed and to have the discussion with Ellen prior to that meeting. And then we'll be completed with, with this year's process and, and just move on to, to the goal-setting piece. We may end up addressing both at, in September. I'm not really sure of the timing of the goal-setting. But as far as the, the year-end evaluation, that will be completed for the September board meeting. And I will say we had good participation, you know, once I, I unleashed the whips on everyone for a few times.
Any questions for Liz? Thank you for coordinating it. It's a large, large amount of work, but I think it will be very fruitful. All right. Moving onward to committee reports.
Roger, may I, one quick comment because I think this fits into chair business. Last month, we said that in the next four meetings in September, we're going to nominate or appoint the survey task force. So the only thing I'm going to say in this meeting is if anybody wants to be part of that and wants to take over the survey task force, please think about that. I guess we should try to figure that out offline. But if anybody has any, just, just reach out to Roger or me and we'll try to figure that out so we can appoint him the next meeting.
All right, thank you, Raoul. Yeah, so if you're interested in participating in the survey task force, please contact me and Raoul. Raoul can give you the most information regarding the timing and commitment required for that. Other comments for chair business? So committee reports, starting with education, Liz.
Sorry, I already muted myself again. The education committee did not meet in August due to conflicts and vacations. So there is nothing to update as of right now.
Thank you. Governance committee, Sheila.
Hi, so we met last week. We are still working on our meeting efficiency and strategic planning goals. And I will be presenting something to them next month on a proposal for consent agenda to then be presented to the whole board.
Thank you. Any questions for Sheila?
Just a comment because it's something we're also working on is the board of trustees job description. We have a document that we started discussing at governance and providing comments within governance. But if anybody wants to see it before, we share with the full board, we can do that as well.
Sorry, Raoul.
No, it's not mine.
Fine, I'm done with governance. Finance committee, Kristin.
Yeah, finance also didn't meet this month. Leanna needed some extra time. She's working on the audit as we have discussed and also preparing some additional information for the next two months. So we'll, we'll review those financial statements for this month, in the next month, once they're ready with the audit. So nothing else here. And we already talked about the interest rate law. Leanna reviewed that with everybody.
Great. Questions for Kristin? Or for finance in general? Hearing none. Ben, development committee.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So yeah, we did have a good meeting this, this couple of weeks ago for the, the development committee. As Ellen alluded to earlier, we actually had a presentation by Betsy, the consultant we had, do the feasibility report for us. And, and we reviewed and had her present her findings and some of the ideas that she had. And, and really comes down to, you know, another thing that Ellen mentioned was, you know, digesting what she gave us, looking for opportunities to start to pull together some of her ideas and put them into tactical action plans. And then also to, to also define to the, the folks out here that are listening, that there will be kind of two committees, right? One will go into this capital campaign status, right? And where the capital campaign committee will sit is something under discussion and where it'll be organized. But I will put in that, you know, the infrastructure we have is, is pretty solid from what Betsy had told us. We have some staffing already. We have an additional staff potential to augment some of the team that we have. We have a database and a couple of other action items that we've already put into place. So we want to keep growing those. But I will put at least a teaser out right now before we do a full report and a full action plan that we'll, we'll deliver in September for the, for the development committee and the capital campaign. But really, I hope folks out there listening to this, and even folks here on the board of trustees and our extended advisors can start to help us come up with some ideas around staffing, what we'll call the campaign volunteers. And now this role will simply be, you know, a kind of a chief set of boosters for the campaign. You'll review some of our prospect lists. You'll identify folks that we can, you know, make relationships with, corporations, foundations. You know, those are the types of activities that, that we're looking to start to strengthen this, this team with. It'll be all coordinated across the, the executive team with, with Ellen's leadership, but also with the development committee to kind of keep things aligned and make sure we have the right, the right goals put in place. So anyone out there that has interest, it's a pretty prestigious, we think, role for helping the school. No matter what, you know, where you are in the school relationship, it'd be great to have a cross-section of folks that can really help us reach out. So that's just a teaser for our September report, which will go into more detail about exactly the kind of the profiles and the folks that we're looking to, to have, raise their hand and help out. I think it's important to understand too that, you know, the, the sources of these funds are going to be super important for advancement of our school. Not only from a physical, but also from a virtual point of view, right? We have some targeted places we want to start to use that money, obviously with the acquisition of the buildings and some of the investments we're doing there. And, and we'll also start to formalize that list so that we'll have a clear indication of where this money will be spent during the capital campaign collection. Then I also think it's important to mark that this is not a race, but it'll be an ongoing investment of, of the school as well as a time of volunteers. And so this will be, you know, scheduled with events as well as tactical priorities that go over the next few years. So we can, you know, meet our, meet our goal, but also align them with the use of that money along with our, our investments we want to do in the property. So right now, that's kind of the overview of the feasibility study and the breakdown there. I think Betsy did a great job to kind of coordinate all of those and start to give us some ideas of how to pull this together and make it actionable, involving a lot of different folks here on the board as well as our, our foundation, looking for ways to get support there as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions around that. And so in September, we'll get a, a more detailed report in terms of action items and pulling together those volunteer requests and, and our, our requests out to the, the community for, for those folks to help us out. So that's, that's our report.
Questions for Ben?
Yeah, any questions?
So Ben, if, if someone is interested in serving on the capital campaign committee, who should they contact?
You can reach out to myself or Ellen. I think Ellen will, will be doing, you know, kind of assessments and recruitment and trying to find the right folks to be on this. We're obviously not looking for 40, 50 people. We're looking for some very dedicated types of folks to help us out in a few different areas. So I think it'll be Ellen you can reach out to and, and we can all, you know, kind of work through a process to, to select those folks that can, that help us.
All right, thank you. And either yourself or Maura, would you like to give an update on the golf tournament?
Yeah, I got one, but I think Maura, you might be a little closer to it. Krista gave me some great news and probably good for you to, to deliver that. I'm sure you have the, more of the details.
We are actually having a wrap-up meeting next week. But preliminary numbers, and Leanna, I don't know if you have any more detail than I do, but about $18,000 was raised this year through the golf tournament, which was about an increase of 6,000 plus or minus over last year. So thank you to absolutely everybody who donated, participated, bid on raffle items and auction items. It was a great day. Weather was, weather was good. It was nice to see a full field out there. Um, it was nice to see a full field out there.
So I think that's it, Roger, for, uh, okay.
Great, great job on the, uh, golf, for the golf committee, great job on that, uh, you know, almost a 50% increase in funds raised over last year. And I think it's a great tradition that we've got, that we've really started. So. I think we are all set with committee reports at this point. There was nothing flagged for discussion, so we are ready for meeting wrap-up. So first I think uh, looking for summary of action items. Sarah, would you like to summarize or we can do it as a group?
You mean from this meeting, correct?
Yes, summary of action items from this meeting.
Uh, no, actually, I don't think there were any. Let's take note of them.
I believe I have one for, well, well, actually, this would be agenda item, agenda items for September. I think I have, I have those, but I don't think we had any, uh, any action items that came out of the meeting that I, that I, that I noted on mine. Anybody else, uh, identify, uh, action items?
Um, Roger, just, just a couple, a couple, uh, questions that have just kind of popped up here. Um, new seventh, new students, so the new, the orientation on Monday is for the sixth graders coming in for the ninth graders, because they're going from middle school to high school, and any new seventh and eighth graders as well. Okay, and the parents, uh, so, uh, that have those children will be getting more information about, you know, busing and, and the, the, you know, agenda for the day and things like that. So just want to clarify that if you have a, a student like Rahul does coming in as a new seventh or eighth grader, they also, um, are invited to attend that day. Um, and I, there's a question about lockers. Mike, any decision on lockers? Is that a conversation that's come up? Cause we did not use lockers in the spring.
We haven't had a formal discussion on that yet, but I do believe that we will be utilizing lockers. Uh, they, I, they are, they are, I was asked a cup, maybe a month or so ago by Anthony Montesian and, um, I think Eric Lane about that. And I said that we should, we're assigning them and prepared to use them. I just think we need to.
For contact tracing purposes and the kids will have masks on. Um, okay, and that, that's all that's popped up, just to clarify.
Um, one thing that was on, on my list as far as, you know, sort of heads up for the board that in the, uh, September board meeting, we will be taking a, a vote to approve or approve the purchase or delegate the, the signing, assigning ability to purchase the building will be done in the September board meeting. Yeah, and Ellen, did you want to say more about that? I, I mangled that a bit.
Yeah, I, I think the last piece, uh, that we kind of confirmed today is that we will be taking one more vote. Um, part of that vote will be around, there's some language that, that we'll need to vote on for Bob Baldwin and for the lawyer. And then, um, you'll be giving authority for, um, uh, representative from the school to actually, um, sign documents and, and do that for the, um, on behalf of the community. And so we'll do that at the September 23rd meeting. We don't foresee needing any other special meetings, um, this month.
And that, just for board members, that will be done in open session. All right. So I think we are.
Are you going to add the other, um, agenda topics?
Yeah, let's, let's, I'm going to sw- switch the order on the agenda. Let's cover, uh, agenda items first and then I'm going to wrap up with the meeting effectiveness. I think it's a better ordering. So, um, for the September meeting, they have, uh, besides the vote I just described, we'll be getting, we'll be doing the ED vote on the ED assessment or evaluation. And we'll also be appointing the, uh, survey task force, so the items that I have.
Yes. And development, um, said they were going to.
Right. So development is going to be providing a more detailed report on the capital raise, fundraising effort and governance will be providing us, uh, framework for the consent agenda and the, uh, board member, uh, job description. Any other non-standard uh, agenda items for September?
Just the extended finance to review the audit if completed.
All right, yes. We will be doing the the yearly audit report in September. And that's typically, and that's typically something, in the past, that's typically been October. And so as we're moving, pulling it forward, which is a good sign.
Means it's a lot of work that Leanna's been doing.
Yeah.
She's, yeah, she is, uh, she is my hero.
Other, other, uh, candidate agenda items for September? Last item I have on my agenda is, uh, meeting effectiveness. You know, sort of like to discuss this, discuss any, uh, challenges that we had, things that we did well. What should we continue to do?
Well, I think this only affected me and if that's the case, we can ignore it. It's that I couldn't access the, uh, the agenda in the packet, but Sarah, Leanna, she had to explicitly share with me. And, and that only happened a few minutes before the board meeting. But, uh, if it only affected me, then it's no issue.
Roger, when you create the, um, the agenda and you go in and you share with everybody, sometimes it's easy to miss one and I think that's what happened. When I found it, when I went in, everybody was checked except Raul.
He was picking on me, but that's fine. I'll forgive him.
I didn't think to check. I should go in when I, when I review it, I should always check that and I will do that from going forward.
It's okay. Sarah, we brought it up in case it, it affected anybody else, but if it was just me, it's fine.
Oh, I, I like Sarah's, I like Sarah's improvement there because on the form, I basically just get a whole list of names to check off and it's very easy to miss one. I tried to, I tried to do it by counting board members, but um, it's easy, easy to, easy to miss a person's name in amongst the, the list of, the checklist of names.
So there's no way to just say share with board members?
No. They, they, I think there might be a share all button, but our list of all is base, is very large. Maybe there's something a board attract could do to help us out there. We could have something. I'll, I'll look and see if there's something better.
Again, not a big deal.
No, let's, well, let's, let's get the small ones right too, before they become bigger problems. Uh, other things for meeting effectiveness?
I think Zach did a great job as a timekeeper.
Anyone wants to know, we are currently running one hour and seven minutes ahead of schedule.
You should do it more often.
Okay.
So with that, unless there are anything else to discuss, I think we are, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
A second, a second.
From Ben?
So Liz and Ben.
Sarah, would you call the rule, please?
Ben Hamel.
Yes.
Don Capello.
Yes.
Kristen Carney.
Yes.
Liz Saul.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Balmini Sampas.
Yes.
Zachary Oldsby.
Yes.
All set.
Motion passes. Enjoy your evening. Thank you, everybody.